All right. Okay, the time is 6:30 PM. We're going to go ahead and start promptly tonight. We have one absence tonight, I'm sorry, two absences tonight for Norma Sanchez-Stevens, as well as Randy Roberts. Can I get a motion to cover the absences, please?
Make a motion to excuse both Councilman Randy Roberts. Continue prayers for him. And Mrs. Stevens.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Councilman Hicks, would you please lead us in the invocation?
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for today. Thank you for bringing us together to make decisions that are tough decisions to make, but let's make them in knowing that we're doing this for the citizens of Sibolo and our workers and taking care of them. Let's watch over our first responders, our military personnel, keep them in our prayers as they watch after us. In these things we pray. Amen.
All right. Next up is our citizens to be heard. This is the only time during the council meeting that a citizen can address the city council. It is the opportunity for visitors and guests to address the council on any issue to include agenda items. All visitors wishing to speak must fill out the sign-in roster prior to the start of the meeting. The city council may not deliberate any non-agenda issue, nor may any action be taken on any non-agenda issue at this time. However, the city council may present any factual response to items brought up by citizens. Attorney General Opinion, J.C. 0169, limit of three minutes each. All remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body. Remarks may also be addressed to any individual member of the council so long as the remarks are about matters of local public concern and not disruptive to the meeting or threatening to the member or any attendee. Any person violating this policy may be requested to leave the meeting, but no person may be requested to leave or forced to leave the meeting because of the viewpoint expressed. This meeting is livestreamed. If anyone would like to make comments on any matter regarding the city of Sibolo or on an agenda item and have the item read at the meeting, please email psemics@sibolotx.gov and vchapman@sibolotx.gov, or call 210-566-6111 before 5:00 PM the date of the meeting. And so we're going to jump to item 8A, which is an ordinance, approval/disapproval of an ordinance of the city of Sibolo increasing the Texas Municipal Retirement System, TMRS, statutory maximum rate limit. Mr. Reed and Ms. Sanchez. Hello, Ms. Sanchez.
Good evening. Just one second, pull that out. Okay, Veronica Sanchez, Director of PPD. Mayor Council, today we're bringing to you a statutory maximum contribution rate limit agenda item. We're seeking your direction on the current limit of 13.5% to 15.5%. If, for some reason, the city's rate, TMRS rate, ever exceeds 15.5%, then the limit would have to be removed to avoid suspending updated service credits and COLAs. So let me explain real quick. What is a statutory maximum contribution rate limit? The TMRS Act provides a limit to the maximum rate that a city can be required to contribute for its retirement plan. This limit, known as the statutory maximum, or the STAT-MAX, is not a limit of the cost of the plan, but rather it's a limit on the maximum that a participating city could be required to contribute for the plan. The maximum rate limit is based on the contribution of employee deposit rate and the city's matching ratio. The statutory maximum was part of the original TMRS Act and was amended to remove the statutory maximum for any new cities effective January 1st of 2000. Most cities in the TMR system have removed the maximum contribution rate limit. The city of Sibolo statutory max contribution rate limit, when the city of Sibolo began participating in TMRS in 1988, it did so with an established statutory max of 9.5%. At the time, the benefit was 5% employee contribution and a 1.5 to 1 city match. As a city has increased the employee rate to 7% and a city match of 2 to 1, the statutory maximum has increased to 13.5%. The maximum rate limit is based on the contribution of employee deposit rates and city matching ratios. The 2025 actuarially determined contribution rate is 13.97, so the current max of 13.5 is exceeded for the next calendar year. So why would you increase the statutory maximum contribution rate? It would allow the city to contribute the 13.97 in the next fiscal year based on that actuarial determination, and it avoids suspending any updated service credits and COLA benefits. Suspending such benefits would mean retirees would not receive an increase to their TMRS monthly payments. As I mentioned before, if at any point the actuarially determined rate of 15.5 were ever exceeded, then we would have to come back to council to remove that limit. Current cities that, oop, let me just a sec. Current cities that are under this statutory maximum have one opportunity to increase that rate limit. After that opportunity is taken, then they do have to remove it in order to continue to pay that actuarially determined rate. There is an option to remove the statutory maximum contribution rate limit, and this is in here. Today, we're only requesting that we increase the limit. At some point, though, I do want you to know that this could be the action that council has to consider to remove the limit. Removing it would allow the city to ensure that all future contributions to TMRS are based strictly on that actuarially determined rate. It would allow the city to contribute, again, the 13.97 or whichever actuarially determined rate were in place. And again, it avoids us suspending that updated service credit and COLA. In the last four years, I did want to provide for you those cities that have removed their statutory maximum. Here's a history of what that rate limit has been. We've got a maximum of 13.5. Prior year was 11.79. That was in fiscal year '23. Current year, '24, it is 12.96. And again, next year's is 13.97. The actuarially determined rate increase for current fiscal year to next fiscal year has been built in the base budget. So we are recommending an increase to 15.5% to ensure the city's contribution to the TMRS are based on the actuarially determined rate each year. I do have Mr. Collin here with TMRS who's, can speak to this more intelligently, but if you have any questions, either him or I can answer that for you.
And what was the gentleman's name again?
Collin.
Collin. Collin, would you like to come up to the podium, please? Okay. And so I don't have any questions for you myself, Collin, but I want to open it up to the city council. If any of our council members have any questions, we'll start with Councilman Benson on this side, and we'll work our way down. Anything for you, DG? Mahoney, anything?
Not a question. But a comment.
Sure. Okay. Katie, anything? Nope. Dick, Joel? No questions? Okay. I guess we can go to your comment, then. Councilman Mahoney, if you don't mind? Not full of questions on this particular item.
No, I just wanted to make this comment. I was a retiree from a Texas municipal retirement system city. There was a time when they had that COLA, the Cost of Living Adjustment, suspended for several years. It's contributed to making it difficult to fill positions at the city because that's a morale buster for employees. They finally reinstated it after about five or six years, and I learned that that costs the city more in the long run to do that because they had to make up for the past time. So I think it's a great benefit for employees and those who are paying attention, who are thinking of staying long term, they watch things like this. And that's all I'll say.
Thank you, Councilman Mahoney. Is there anything else that the city staff would want to convey to us before we call for a motion?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay. So with that being said, Councilman Mahoney, would you entertain a motion for this?
Oh, I'll put the words together here.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Go ahead, Katie.
I make a motion to approve 8A.
Okay. I'll second.
Okay. I got a motion and a second. Please vote on your screens. I think I messed it up.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go back to, actually, we're going to go to 9B, which is Resolution 9B, approval/disapproval of a resolution of the city of Sibolo providing for defeasance and calling for redemption of certain outstanding city obligations and other matter in connection therewith. Hello, Victor. How are you doing, sir?
Hello. Mayor, Mayor, Member of the Castle, thank you for having here today. I appreciate you all.
What the strategy has been for y'all and other Texas municipalities is that it's an opportunity to stabilize your interest in sinking fund tax rate. Those taxes would only be used for the repayment of principal and interest on existing debt. And so the city has been able to do that and paid off some debt early. It also has the benefit of being able to continue funding capital improvements in the future without having to increase that INS tax rate. So again, it's more of an INS tax rate management program that you're allowed to do. So since 2023, that fiscal year, we've had this program in place, a defeasance program. Since that time, the council's decision to continue that program and approve that program has allowed the city to pay off principal early on your existing debt of $1,135,000. And what that's done is also allowed you to save your taxpayers $426,000 because you've made those early payments. Also, the other benefit is that if you continue it on to this next year, we could continue with the capital improvement financing plan that we developed for the city for the next five years where we could maintain the current INS tax rate of 17.93 cents. And for next year, we could fund projects for $11.5 million without impacting that current INS tax rate. If you decide to move forward with the defeasance resolution for this upcoming year, the result would be that you would be able to pay off principal in the amount of $450,000 and save your taxpayers an additional $86,000 in interest costs by maintaining this program. So the sources for the revenues to pay off this debt is your interest in sinking fund tax revenues. So the idea and the strategy would keep your INS tax rate to 17.93 cents, so we'll be able to collect a little bit. Of course, none of us work pro bono or anything like that, so there's legal and fiscal fees. And so for this program here for this upcoming year, the estimated fees will be about $7,500. That's with the bond attorneys and financial advisors and the pain agent registrars. But this will be offset by the interest cost savings that you're going to achieve, about $86,000. Again, all these expenses come from the interest in sinking fund, and nothing comes from your general fund to continue this program. So the process is that we publish a tax rate that we want to set for the INS tax rate of 17.93 cents. The council, before you adopt your budget and set your tax rate, you would approve a defeasance resolution that allow you to maintain that tax rate and also use those extra monies that we plan to collect next year to pay off the debt early, as indicated in this presentation. And that's the end of my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you very much, Victor. I'll open it up for questions, starting with Councilman Hicks. Anything?
Not at this time.
Nope. Dick? No. Katie, anything? Mahoney, no. TG?
No.
No? Okay. All right. Can I entertain a motion for 9B?
Make a motion to approve 9B.
Okay. I got a motion by Councilman Benson, seconded by Councilman Mahoney. Please vote on your screens.
Well, thank you for having me here again. It's good to see everybody. I look forward to seeing you soon.
Thank you very much for the wise financial advice that you provide for the city of Sibolo.
Thank you.
You've been saving us $100,000 or $500,000 plus so far with the previous one and this. So thank you.
Yeah, it's pretty exciting that y'all are implementing this for your taxpayers, for sure.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Have a good day.
You too.
Okay. So now we're going to bounce back to what I just announced earlier as far as citizens to be heard. We do have five to be read by our city secretary office. Is it you, Valerie, who's going to read them? Okay. Please start with the first one. Thank you.
A horrendous incident happened here at El Serrano Senior Housing in Sibolo on 2/8/24. Perhaps you could explain how a tenant here gets away with causing another tenant's death. My friend Fran Prinsler, now deceased, was accosted by another resident, Anna Garza, in the manager's office, and her actions caused my friend's death, and no charges were filed against her. Anna was angry at Fran for having called animal control because two days prior, Anna's dog scratched Fran's leg, a six-inch scratch that broke the skin. Animal control came to El Serrano to talk with Anna, and when she could not show them current shot records for her dogs, they told her to quarantine them for 10 days. She walked by the office and saw Fran and they were talking to the manager, Donna Barzaloo. Anna barged into the office and screamed and cursed and threatened Fran as she backed her up against a wall. Fran kept telling her to back up and get away from her. Anna was inches away from Fran's face. The manager did nothing while witnessing the rage-filled rant. Anna left the office, and Fran was scared, shaking and crying. Fran called the police, who came, and while talking with the police about making a report, Fran collapsed and was having difficulty breathing. All of a sudden, she grabbed her head and screamed out in pain. EMS was called, and they took Fran to the hospital where she fell into a coma and died two days later. She had had massive brain bleed due to her blood pressure skyrocketing from the fear of Anna. Coincidentally, Donna, the manager, had a camera sitting on a table in the office which recorded the entire incident. The two officers watched the video and did two more, as did two more of Fran's close friends. The police went up to Anna's apartment to speak with her, but she didn't answer her door. The next day, Fran's son came to the office to view the video, but Donna said there was no video. She had deleted it. We are baffled as to why the police never returned to speak with Anna or why no charges were filed against her. The two friends of Fran, Janice Lappam and Shirley Heath, went to the police station and gave statements and were told that Anna committed a crime and charges would be filed. Yet, nothing has been done. El Serrano's corporate office refused to evict Anna, and she still lives here despite having tormented, threatened, and ultimately, her actions towards Fran caused her death. The fact that Donna deleted the video is tampering with evidence. Anna should have been charged with involuntary manslaughter at the very least. Anna is an angry, hot-tempered person, and once again, she verbally assaulted and smacked the hat off another resident here in the clubroom in front of everyone on 8/9/24. She is an unofficial caregiver to resident Frank Suarez. He is in a wheelchair and needs quite a bit of help. Anna stood up and screamed, I'm going to paraphrase, "F you" to Frank, smacked his hat off, and then screamed at the entire roomful of residents. F everyone. She stormed off to the far end of the clubroom, and Frank followed her, trying to talk to her, and she, sorry, and she screamed at Frank to F off once more. A shocked resident went to the office and told manager Donna, who said she wasn't going to do anything about it. Several upset residents wrote incident reports to corroborate. It's not done, but her three minutes are up. Do you want me to continue or?
There's quite a bit.
No, I think we can stop there at the time. So thank you.
As we all think we're even halfway through.
Okay.
It was sent in by Teresa, I'm sorry if I mispronounce it, McAvenue Mims, and she lives at the apartments. Okay. The next one is from Ms. Cara Latimer. I am writing to strongly, let me start the timer. I am writing to strongly oppose the proposed property tax increase for the upcoming fiscal year. After reviewing the city's financial audits available on the city's website, it is clear that Sibolo has already experienced a huge increase in revenue from both property taxes and other taxes generated by the residents and local businesses over the past four years. Given the substantial rise in revenue on the backs of taxpayers, there is no justification for burdening residents with yet another tax hike. Consider the following data. 2019 to 2020, an increase in revenue of $1,329,812. 2020 to 2021, an increase in revenue of $181,257. 2021 to 2022, an increase in revenue of $1,557,650. 2022 to 2023, an increase in revenue of $1,488,734. In total, this reflects an increase of over $4.5 million in property tax revenue alone over just four years. Additionally, other tax revenues have grown significantly. 2019 to 2020, a rise of $1,098,474. 2020 to 2021, a rise of $331,815. 2021 to 2022, a rise of $1,166,734. 2022 to 2023, a rise of $777,229. This represents a total increase of over $3.3 million in other tax revenues during the same period. With such a huge increase in revenue to the city on the backs of taxpayers, it is unreasonable to propose yet another tax increase. The city's budget should be capable of managing its growth without further burdening residents. We are paying our share. The city should prioritize responsible spending and ensure that any increases in expenses are in line with actual growth, not at the expense of taxpayers. Particularly concerning is the increase in expenses within the city manager's office and overall management. How did these increases become so huge compared to the average employee's pay? Are the raises at the top justified? It appears that our management needs to find a way to not keep needing more and more money. I urge the city council to reconsider this proposed tax increase and focus instead on managing expenses more effectively, particularly within the upper echelons of city management. It is imperative that we protect our residents from unjustified financial strain. I am writing to you today as a concerned resident, it's at the end, it just says Mr. P., District 3. I am writing to you today as a concerned resident of Sibolo for the past 17 years and law enforcement professional for over 20-plus years. I urge you to demonstrate leadership and courage by seeking voter approval for a tax increase dedicated to enhancing public safety in our city. Our community has experienced significant growth and development over the years, and with that growth comes an increased demand for public safety services. Our police and fire departments are working tirelessly to protect our citizens, but they are stretched thin and in need of additional resources. I understand that raising taxes is never a popular decision, but it is a necessary one if we want to maintain the safety and security of our community. The city council has the opportunity to make incremental tax increases over the past several years, which could have helped to alleviate the current strain on our public safety departments. However, those opportunities were not taken. Furthermore, I must express my deep concern with the tone and language used by some members of the council in recent months regarding city staff. This kind of negativity and disrespect has lasting impacts on morale and can significantly hinder the city's ability to recruit and retain talented law enforcement professionals who are seeking to make Sibolo their career. Our first responders and all public servants of Sibolo deserve our utmost respect and support. It's important to acknowledge that Sibolo is home to a large population of law enforcement professionals who work for other agencies in the region. The negative behavior exhibited by some on the council has caused these individuals to question whether Sibolo is the right community for them to raise their families. This is a serious concern that could lead to a loss of valuable community members. It is time for the city council to act decisively and put the question of a tax increase for public safety before the voters. The council's vision for Sibolo emphasizes being responsible to residents. However, denying residents the opportunity to exercise their right to vote directly on important issues appears to contradict this principle. True responsiveness involves actively listening to and considering the diverse perspectives of the community. Providing residents with a chance to participate in decision-making through ballot initiatives demonstrates respect for their voices and fosters a sense of ownership in shaping the future of Sibolo. I am confident that the citizens of Sibolo understand the importance of public safety and will support a reasonable tax increase to ensure that our police and fire departments have the resources they need to keep us safe. I urge you to have the courage to seek voter approval on this critical issue. The safety and well-being of our community depends on it. Thank you for your time and consideration, Mr. P. This is Gilbert Escobar, sent this one in. I am writing to express my deep concern regarding the ongoing discussion about the 100% market adjustment for our dedicated city staff and how it's even something you all are questioning. After watching the past budget workshops, I am appalled by the way some council members have treated the staff, particularly when voices were raised at the city manager. This behavior is not only unprofessional but also unacceptable. Even a small child knows that. We must take a moment to reflect on how far the city has come under the current management and the critical role that the staff, especially those in public safety and economic development, have played in that progress. With the support of the city manager, Public Works has been working in all weather conditions, and the city manager keeps them fueled and motivated to continue to work for this great city. I have lived here long enough to remember the state of our city's roads before the current city manager took over. Streets like Bentwood Riots Drive were once in terrible condition, but thanks to the relentless efforts of the Streets Department, we now drive on a beautifully smooth road. Sibolo Valley Drive and Dean Road are just a couple of other examples of how the city is improving. Their work is far from done, and with the support of Wayne Reed, they can continue to achieve more and more. The same support that the city manager gives to Economic Development Team keeps them motivated to continue to bring in businesses. They have brought in 44 businesses in just the past year. Let's say that number again, 44 businesses. That's an incredible achievement. For the council to continue to criticize economic development, suggesting they need to work harder, is ridiculously insane. The hard truth is that the city has a negative reputation that the city is not business-friendly. As a business owner in this city, I've experienced the reality of that reputation. The loss of potential tax revenue isn't due to staff performance, but rather due to the careless comments and hoops the council makes business owners jump through. The police department is stretched thin, working with bare minimum staffing because you can go right next door to make thousands of dollars more. Do you want me to continue? He's got a little bit left.
No, we can finish that one.
Well, we stopped the others. We can.
Don't we have one more to go? Didn't we have five, right? Yeah, let's go to the last one.
Okay. This is.
I know, I meant to stop it.
I apologize if I mispronounce Travis Nahar or Najjar. I felt compelled, I'm sorry. I felt compelled to speak out at the recent behavior of council towards staff over the past few meetings, specifically the most recent meeting regarding the budget. It bears reminding you elected officials work for the residents who voted you in to those seats, and as most staff seems to understand that in public, they represent this wonderful city, you all would do right to remember the same. While it is understandable that council wants what is in the best interest of the citizens and to speak on our behalf, it should be made abundantly clear, speaking to staff in such a disrespectful and demeaning way is not how to do that. And to the council members who sit and say nothing while this behavior is on display and on the record by their fellow officials, your behavior is just as disappointing. I am fine with asking hard questions. It is fine to disagree or continue dialogue that is important, but I can't help but wonder if you were to sit and watch your wife or husband, daughter or son, mother or father be spoken to in such a way, how would you feel? It is not okay to act as if the staff, an organization that is doing its best, bending over backwards- The police department is stretched thin, working with bare minimum staffing, because you can go right next door to make thousands of dollars more. Do you want me to continue? He's got a little bit left.
No, we can finish that one.
Well, we stopped the others.
Don't we have one more to go? Didn't we have five, right? Yeah, let's go to the last one. I know, I meant to stop it.
I apologize if I mispronounced Travis Nahar or Najjar. I felt, oh, I'm sorry. I felt compelled to speak out at the recent behavior of council towards staff over the past few meetings, specifically the most recent meeting regarding the budget. It bears reminding you elected officials work for the residents who voted you in to those seats. And as most staff seems to understand that in public, they represent this wonderful city, you all would do right to remember the same. While it is understandable that council wants what is in the best interest of the citizens and to speak on our behalf, it should be made abundantly clear speaking to staff in such a disrespectful and demeaning way is not how to do that. And to the council members who sit and say nothing while this behavior is on display and on the record by their fellow officials, your behavior is just as disappointing. I am fine with asking hard questions. It is fine to disagree or continue dialogue that is important, but I can't help but wonder if you were to sit and watch your wife or husband, daughter or son, mother or father be spoken to in such a way, how would you feel? It is not okay to act as if the staff and organization that is doing its best, bending over backwards to meet the needs of the growing community, and as you all have said in the past, do more with less, are incompetent and unable to do what you're asking. The palpable disdain that some council seem to have for staff begs the question as to why. At the community events I have enjoyed, it is clear that staff seem to get along and have built strong relationships under Mr. Wayne Reed's guidance. He has been lucky enough to bring back two staff members who left that are the best in their respective fields. Ms. Anna Miranda is at the top of her occupation, came back to which may only be understood as her ties to the Cibolo organization felt strongly under Mr. Reed to encourage her to return and be a part of the same things staff seem to believe in. Ms. Kelsey Lee, who needs no introduction for the amazing things she is doing for our commercial community, returned as well and is making the city shine even brighter than her predecessor, Mr. Mark Left. So what is council seeing? After spending multiple evenings going back and watching previous council meetings, it's as though there must be a black cloud that sits within the organization, sharing their opinions about staff to council members not strong enough to see through the disguise. In the years I have been in Cibolo, it is clear that Mr. Reed has brought fresh ideas to staff, staff I have the privilege to have interacted with, to walk into City Hall and see the utility billing staff who have clearly made relationships with their residents, who cry with them when there is a loss or rejoice with them when good news is shared. The fire department helping a mom load up groceries and calm a screaming child with a fire hat and allow that mother a moment's peace. The drainage department and the kindness of their own hearts and pockets during the holidays, fixing up bikes found in trash for underprivileged kiddos, or paying off school lunch debt for an entire school, all while saying nothing. These are the people that you demean when you speak to their team leads and behave like they are unable to meet your requests at the needs of our community. The Cibolo community is better because of the people on staff, not the volunteers who sit on a dais. And it seems clear by the behavior of council, they are blissfully unaware at how hard staff work for the residents, try to do right by the community, their directors and their teammates. They deserve at least, the very least, respect for that.
Thank you so much, Valerie. I appreciate it. All right, we're going to move on to six A, public hearing. Conduct a public hearing to hear public testimony regarding FY25 budget. Mr. Reed and Ms. Miranda.
Good evening, Mayor, members of City Council. Anna, Miranda, and I will co-present on this presentation. And I want to start off by thanking you, Mayor, and each member of City Council, even Mr. Roberts and Ms. Sancho Stevens, who are not with us tonight, for your many hours of work across the past several months, attending six budget workshops to help us get to this public hearing tonight, and afterwards, your consideration on adopting a budget. Let me, here we go. That is the wrong PowerPoint. We'll go to the budget. Thank you. And I will move quickly through this presentation as well, Ms. Miranda, because much of this is really for the general public. It is available in the City Council packet. Some of this, most of this, City Council has already seen. Council has seen many of these slides, and so for the general public, I hope that this is informational. And this is the overview of the presentation. Council knows that this is the end of the budget process, where tonight, and if needed on Wednesday night, you'll be considering the adoption of a budget, ratification of a tax rate, and the adoption of a tax rate. I've mentioned before that you've held six total budget workshops, three mini-budget workshops, and three major workshops. Let me just summarize some of the major directions that council has given us. The SRO program, that's the School Resource Officer Program, is loaded with four additional positions, which will be filled after the vacancies and patrol are filled. We'll also be coming back to you with an SRO job description and then the policy for the annual renewal process, so that you can understand and give us direction on that annual renewal. You've created a Development Services Fund in this budget and supported its creation to benefit the general fund. You've also had the consideration of a special election on the tax rate increase. You acted on that at your August thirteenth meeting, and you have moved that forward so that it is a consideration of our voters on November fifth. You've set a maximum tax rate for public notice, for which you're having a public hearing tonight, and your consideration to set a tax rate for FY25. You've given direction to evaluate the voter approval tax rate and a tax rate of 49.90. Under the Special Revenue Funds, council has supported these four items shown on this slide regarding Cibolo Fest, Road Maintenance, Tolly Road, and the American Rescue Plan Funds for Public Safety salaries. In the Economic Development Corporation, you've supported all requests from the EDC Board. In the Capital Improvement Program, City Council's approved placing bond propositions on the November election, which I was just speaking to, for the public safety facility and the animal services facility. Council has advanced six road projects in this budget in the five-year CIP. And at this time, I'm going to hand this over to Ms. Miranda.
The proposed fiscal year '25 budget for the city organization totals $71.2 million to $72.7 million, depending on the tax rate adopted by City Council tonight. Operating funds are approximately $48 million. Operating funds are comprised of the general fund, the newly-created Development Services Fund, the Utility Fund, and the Drainage Utility District, and account for the day-to-day operations of the city. Special revenue funds total $15.3 million. Debt service funds are $7.7 million, and the EDC fund is approximately $900,000. Which one do I use? It's not the clicker, is it?
Go to the far left, and I just clicked. There you are.
Okay, moving on to the general fund budget. As Mr. Reed mentioned, this is repetitive for City Council, but we do have the public hearing tonight. We want to make sure that the public is aware of all of these items. The budget pressures being faced in the general fund budget include slowing growth in sales tax, which is the second largest source, single source of revenue in the general fund after property taxes, while expenditures are increasing. Increases include the Public Safety Dispatch, inter-local agreement, the legal services related to litigation, fleet replacement, retirement plan contributions, liability insurance, and economic development initiatives. The SR program was added back to the city budget after negotiation with the school district to ensure all costs of the program are fully funded. Increases in the market in terms of employee compensation has made it a struggle to retain and recruit employees, especially in public works and public safety positions. All this with reduced support from ARPA funds this year. This is a breakdown of general fund revenues. Property taxes, it's on page six of your proposed budget book. Property taxes make up 53.5% of revenue at the maximum tax rate of 53.7 cents. Sales tax is at 22.7% of the revenue budget. This chart is on page seven in the proposed budget. Seven of the last ten years have had double-digit growth in sales tax, with five of those seven exceeding 20%. It is now flattening under the current economic climate with higher interest rates combating inflation. We have budgeted for a 9.4% increase in fiscal year '25 with continuing growth in our commercial base and more opportunities for our citizens to spend their tax dollars locally. The breakdown of expenditures in the general fund show that public safety makes up 51% of the city budget, and Public Works makes up 15% of the budget. Adding the $1.8 million in potential salary adjustments and new positions for public safety under a 53.07 tax rate would add another 7.7%. Code enforcement and animal services make up another 3%. These are our boots-on-the-ground positions in the city that make up 76.7% of the general fund budget. Supporting departments make up the other 23.3%. City Council is considering a tax rate of up to 53.7 cent maximum set on August eighth. On August thirteenth, the overall City Council consensus is at a lower rate of 49.9 cents, or the voter approval tax rate of 47.69 cents would be considered tonight. General fund budget scenarios were prepared and included on pages four through, Roman numeral four through seven of the proposed budget book. These scenarios keep us within our 28% fund balance requirement. The base budget in all scenarios provides for funding to bring Public Works within 98% of market competitive pay and provides a performance pay pool of approximately $104,000 for all non-public works safety employees. At 47.69 cents or the voter approval tax rate, $300,000 in funding would be available to consider a performance pay pool or cost-of-living adjustment for public safety. This may allow us to get to 92% of market. At 49.9 cents, there is approximately $900,000 in funding to bring public safety to either 100% of market or 98% of market and hire one or two public safety positions respectively. At 53.7 cents, funding would be available to adjust public safety positions to 98% of market and add eight new public safety positions. In the debt services fund, which is on page seventy-seven in the proposed budget book, INS taxes of approximately $6.6 million and other revenues from the YMCA transfers from street maintenance, tax, and EDC funds to support debt will fund principal and interest payments of $7.3 million and allow us to defees debt of approximately $450,000, which is a presentation that our financial advisor covered tonight. The enterprise funds overview. The fiscal year '25 budget includes budgets for three enterprise funds. That's up from two last year, which includes the new Development Services Fund. An enterprise fund is used to account for operations that are financed and operated in a manner similar to private business, where the intent is that the cost of providing goods or services to the public on a continuing basis be financed or covered through user charges. The new Development Services Funds include the building inspections and planning services area. It does not create new positions, but moves seven existing employees in the planning department out of the general fund. Code enforcement remains in the general fund. Accounting for the revenues and expenses in a separate fund ensures that user fees cover costs of services provided and reduces the cost in the general fund where we have a 28% reserve requirement. We did replace this slide. This was the original slide showing $3,055,720 in expenditures. However, general supplies and repairs was overstated at $133,000 and other expenses understated at $1,000. There was a misclassification of some of the expenditures, and it's been corrected to show the $3,055,000 correctly, general supplies and repairs of $34,000 and other expenses of $100,000. Those other expenses are the credit card fees related to the 3% collected on revenues in that fund. The wastewater utility fund budget includes a fee increase of 4% to water and 3% to wastewater charges to cover the increased cost of providing services. The fund supports 22 FTEs, including one new administrative position in the utility billing office. This budget provides for market competitive pay for the existing seventeen Public Works positions at a cost of roughly $63,000. We show a healthy fund balance in Water-Wastewater Utility Fund or working capital of $8.3 million at the end of the fiscal year '25 proposed budget. Revenues of $19.4 million cover expenses of $19.7 million with fund balance being used for capital expenditures. The revenue makeup of the Water-Wastewater Utility Fund, as you can see from this slide, is 49% water, 26% wastewater, and 25% solid waste and other charges. The Drainage Utility District budget includes a fee increase of a dollar per equivalent residential unit to cover increased costs of service. This fund supports 12 FTEs in FY25, including two new proposed positions, which is a maintenance worker and an MS4 compliance technician. The budget also provides for market competitive pay for the existing ten Public Works positions at a cost of roughly $66,000. Again, in fiscal year '25, we're showing a use of fund balance, beginning fund balance of $845,000, revenues of $1.5 million to cover expenses of $1.9. And these expenses include one-time expenses in capital and non-capital and also in services, utilities, and training for a Drainage Master Plan and DCM update. The Drainage Master Plan would be $150,000, only funded if a grant is received for the remaining portion of that, leaving a fund balance of $438,000. And the Economic Development Fund, this is funded by a quarter cent sales tax. As you know, ending fund balance projected is $2.4 million at the end of 9/30/25. It does include strategic plan implementation, professional services related to that, new economic development grants of $98,500, an advertising marketing campaign, which would include billboard advertising and digital marketing campaigns, directory map updates and downtown enhancements of $7,000. And again, from the EDC fund, we do make a transfer for debt service for bonds issued for the multi-event center. And they do make payments for the land acquisition on 21 revenue bonds. Again, this leaves a healthy $2.4 million in fund balance at the end of fiscal year '25 proposed budget. Special Revenue Funds overview. Again, these have been reviewed with council at a prior budget workshop. Special Revenue Funds, I didn't count them. I forget how many there are. There's just like 25 special revenue funds. The special revenue funds are funds in which the revenue received can only be used for a specific purpose. And so these do not have a fund balance requirement. When we receive these funds, we expect to spend them. As long as they're spent for that specific purpose, we can expend them as quickly as we need to. So Cibolo Fest, we've asked for a transfer to bring this fund back to a positive fund balance. I'd also like to point out child safety fees, which will be used in fiscal year '24 for a program that you'll hear at the next council meeting. The big items are in traffic impact fees. Traffic impact fees are collected in the development process and can be used for qualifying infrastructure expenses. Tolly Road improvements will be the major project anticipated in fiscal year '25. And you can see that we've budgeted traffic, drainage, water, and wastewater impact fees for that project. So we will be drawing down quite a bit in special revenue funds. We have a beginning balance of $21.7 million in all of our special revenue funds. We expect revenue of $4.7 million and expenditures of $15.3 million, drawing down substantially on these special revenue funds to an $11 million fund balance. The five-year capital improvement program, I believe Mr. Reed will cover.
Mayor and council, you've seen this slide before, but let me update you because in our past workshops, we were unable to actually cover this slide and the subsequent slides, although it was in your packet. So the city's five-year CIP model and debt model were updated back in February after sale of the CO's Series 2024. And that model was to be used at the beginning of this budget process. This analysis assumed that our property values would grow by 4% next year and subsequent years, thereby allowing the city to issue up to just over $47 million over the next five years without increasing your debt tax rate, the INS tax rate, of 0.1793. After receiving the 2024 Certified Tax Roll on July 26, the staff requested the city's financial advisor, who you heard from earlier tonight, to update the city's debt model based on actual assessed value growth and on the successful defecence of debt. The updated debt model, as reflected on the last or bottom bar on this slide, shows that our debt capacity is not roughly $47 million, but in fact, $54 million based upon this reevaluation, and that all remaining projects to be funded in the five-year CIP, as it's built right now, total about $15 million. So what you can see here is that council's really focused on the FY25 list of projects which you would be funding by the adoption of the FY25 budget. The subsequent years, FY26 through FY29, leave a lot of the capacity to be determined at a later date. And staff and council have talked about this. You will be having a contract for an award of design engineering later in September to award a contract to have an engineer design wastewater projects in the new Five Square Mile CCN area. And so you're really holding back on the- And so you're really holding back on this debt capacity for that reason and other reasons. The updated debt model, though, does show that for FY twenty-five, our debt capacity is not just eleven million even, but eleven point five million. These are the roads that council has directed us to include in the FY twenty-five budget. We also have for street preservation, seven hundred and fifty thousand for micro surface contracts, another hundred and fifty thousand for in-house projects like you have seen this year, and a total of nine hundred thousand. Mayor and council, that concludes the presentation.
Thank you so much, Mr. Reed. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. It is seven twenty PM. And so on this particular item, you don't have to sign in for this one. Everybody, anybody and everybody is welcome to come up to the microphone and tell us about this proposed budget. I encourage any citizens in the audience tonight that has a commentary for us, now is your opportunity to please come on up and get on the record and let us know your thoughts about the budget that our city staff put together, and as well as council. I think we all worked really hard on this budget for the past two, three months. So there's been a lot of time and thought put into this, but I want to give everybody, including all of our city staff that's here in the audience tonight, if you have something for us to consider, please, the time is now to come on up. It's gonna, it's seven twenty-one PM, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. All right, so hearing done, we're going to move on to item, I'm sorry, yeah, I'll close the public hearing at six twenty, I'm sorry, seven twenty-one PM. I'm going to move on to six B, conduct a public hearing to hear public testimony regarding the tax rate for tax year twenty-twenty-four. Honored Miranda.
I know I am talking a little fast tonight, I know we're limited on time, and also I've had a lot of caffeine today, so. I wanted to start with a slide on the taxable assessed values, and this is by classification. Residential values have grown at four point three percent, commercial at twenty-five point two, and industrial at forty point five, for a total property value increase of eight point six percent. Our homestead cap actually decreased by fifty percent, and our tax exemptions increased by twenty-one point six, bringing our total taxable assessed to ten point seven percent And this is a visual representation of that net of exemptions. The growth from twenty-nineteen in residential has, it makes up eighty percent of our values in twenty-nineteen, and now only makes up eighty-one point eight percent. You can see that our commercial values increased from five point seven percent to nine percent in the five years, and our industrial values have increased from three point two percent to six percent in the same five-year period. I have the transition effects on this one, I think carried over from the prior year, sorry about that. The impact of the disabled veterans exemption is on this slide. This is a state exemption that reduces the amount of taxable property for taxing entities. This slide is simply meant to show the growth in the exemption over the last five years, growing from eleven point eight percent of totally exempt households in twenty-nineteen to twenty point one percent in twenty-twenty-four. With the state also limiting the growth in tax revenue to three and a half percent annually beginning in twenty-nineteen with enactment of SB two, it makes it challenging for growing cities to balance their budgets. And these are visual representations of the data on the previous page. Truth in taxation calculations, the no-new revenue rate, formerly known as the effective rate, is a tax rate which would produce the same amount of tax revenue if applied to the same properties taxed in both years. The voter approval tax rate, formerly known as the rollback rate, is the maximum rate allowed by law without voter approval, and this is where you get the three and a half percent limit that used to be eight percent on the rollback rate. The proposed budget is based on a tax rate of fifty-three point oh seven, which was the maximum tax rate set by city council, and a public hearing is required if the proposed tax rate exceeds the lower of the no-new revenue rate or the voter approval rate. This is a tax rate history by taxing entities. Sibolo has fallen in the middle of cities that we compare ourselves to in the surrounding area. You can see that the twenty-twenty-four would make a difference if we did go up, if we let the voters decide to go up to the fifty-three point oh seven. The total tax rate is made up of two components, a maintenance and operations rate, or MNO rate, is used to fund general fund operations of the city, such as public safety, public works, parks and recreation, and administration. The taxes are deposited into the general fund. At the maximum tax rate, the MNO rate is thirty-five and fourteen, thirty-five point one four cents, and is five point three eight cents over the voter approval MNO rate. Interest and sinking fund, or INS fund, is used to pay debt service or principal and interest on tax-supported projects. At the proposed tax rate, the INS rate is seventeen point nine three cents, which is the same as the prior year, and is expected to defees approximately four hundred and fifty thousand in debt in fiscal year twenty-five. These taxes are deposited in the debt service fund. What does this tax rate mean to a Sibolo homeowner? The table shows the increase in taxes on an average home in Sibolo at tax rates between the no-new revenue rate and the maximum tax rate. At tax rates over the voter approval tax rate, an election for approval of the tax rate would be required. This allows the voters another opportunity to weigh in on the tax rate. What does this tax rate mean to the city? The maximum tax rate of fifty-three point oh seven generates eighteen point seven million in property tax revenue to support the fiscal year twenty-five budget. One applied to net taxable values of approximately three point five billion, twelve point four million in MNO taxes, and six point three million in INS taxes. Tax revenue from the frozen levy generates an additional nine hundred thousand that's allocated between MNO and INS depending on the adoption of those rates. The maximum tax rate would generate one point nine million in additional tax revenue over the voter approval rate, nine hundred and thirty thousand to fund eight new public safety positions, eight hundred and fifty thousand to make market adjustments to public safety. And the difference between the revenue and the expense is to maintain the twenty-eight percent fund balance. A required notice was published on August fourteenth, at least five days prior to this public hearing, in the Seguin Gazette, and is shown there for reference, and it does show the maximum tax rate and how each member of the governing body voted on that maximum tax rate. Adopting a tax rate that exceeds the no-new revenue rate must be a separate vote from the vote adopting the budget, it must be a record vote. At least sixty percent of the members of the governing body must vote in favor of the vote, of the ordinance, and there must be specific language in both the ordinance and on the website, and the motion must be made in a, in specific language as well. In addition, adopting a tax rate that exceeds the NNR MNO rate includes additional language that the tax rate will effectively be raised by X percent and will raise taxes for MNO on a hundred thousand dollar home by X dollars. Adopting a tax rate that exceeds a voter approval tax rate also requires a special election be called by the city council. And then we can open the public hearing.
Okay, thank you so much, I appreciate it, Ms. Miranda. I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing on the, to gather, public testimony regarding the tax rate for tax year twenty-twenty-four. If anybody in the audience wants to come and comment on the tax rate, I know we, I know we, I'm sorry? Okay, yeah, I'm about to get to that. So, I know we spoke about several different tax rates out there, so if you have any commentary upon any of the individual tax rates that we talked about, you know, please come on up. I'll start the public hearing now, it is seven thirty PM. Moving on to seven A, approval, disapproval of a resolution supporting state legislation to establish a dedicated funding mechanism. Better turn this mic on, sorry. I'll start over. Seven A, resolution, approval, disapproval of a resolution supporting state legislation to establish a dedicated funding mechanism for the disabled veterans homestead exemption program. And so before I turn it over to you, Honored Miranda, I just wanted to say a few words for the audience. So we did have a bill in front of the Texas State Legislature during their last session. It was called House Bill sixteen thirteen, and what this bill would have done was reimburse the cities for the lost property tax revenue for allowing disabled veterans to, to at least the hundred percent disabled veterans to not pay property taxes. And so this resolution is in no way us saying we don't want the veterans to get their tax break, because we do. We support our veterans, we absolutely want our veterans to continue to receive the tax break and not pay any property taxes. What this resolution is asking for is for the state of Texas to reimburse the cities for the money that we're losing, the revenue that we're losing. We're losing about three million dollars this particular tax year. And so with that three million dollars, we could use a lot of, we could use that to pay employees, so we could use that to fix roads, all kinds of things, we could use that money for. And so, the House Bill sixteen thirteen did pass the House, it was, I think it was about a hundred and thirty-eight to twelve, I believe there's about a hundred and fifty state reps in Austin, and so it passed the House overwhelmingly, it went to the Senate, and in the Senate it was sent to committee, and in committee it ended up dying because they didn't have enough time to consider it and fund it. And so the funding would have, would have taken about two hundred million dollars to fund this program, and that would have been the initial lump sum payment to go into the fund that would reimburse the cities. And so then, on a continuing basis, the taxes that are assessed on military bases, let's say over at Randolph, if somebody buys something on Amazon, then they pay the taxes, right? And so that, the sales tax collected on, on military bases would go on an ongoing basis to fund this program. And so, what's that?
Military bases.
Okay, well, I think it was in the area, I believe, I don't, I'd have to take a look at it, but, but yeah, so it would be in the areas where these military bases are. And so, we think that this is good to support. Hugh Shine was the author of House Bill sixteen thirteen, unfortunately, he did not win his reelection campaign during the primary, and also our state rep, John Kemble, signed on as a cosponsor, unfortunately, he also did not win his reelection. And so we will be pursuing this with the existing state reps that are in Austin, representing the constituents of Texas. And so this is, this is for us to, because Sibolo is actually the number one city in the entire state of Texas that is, that this is affected by, as far as the percentage of a hundred percent disabled veterans. So, with that being said, go ahead, Ms. Miranda.
I think you've said it very well, and so this resolution tonight, Mayor, is a step towards starting conversations advocating for legislation, this legislative session. So.
I make a motion to approve a resolution supporting state legislation to establish a dedicated funding mechanism for the disabled veterans homestead exemption program.
Okay, got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilwoman Hetzel. Please vote on your screens.
Thank you very much.
Motion passes, thank you, thank you very much. We're going to move on to eight B, approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the city of Sibolo adopting the budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, twenty-twenty-five, beginning October first, twenty-twenty-four, and ending September thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. Okay, are you going to make a presentation, Mr. Reed, or? After that, Katie, Katie has some comments.
Honored Miranda and I gave the presentation during the public hearing, so at this time, myself, Honored Miranda, and the executive team are here to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Reed. We'll start with Katie Cunningham.
So I'm passing out some questions that I had sent Mr. Reed yesterday about the budget. I went through line by line. We are in a very tight budget period, and we, there's been conversation about, well, we can cut more from the budget, we can cut more, let's look at the line items, yada, yada. So I sat down and actually went through the budget, looked at every line item and sent, I think, nine pages of questions to Mr. Reed, ten pages, excuse me. We met today, Mr. Reed, Ms. Miranda, and Ms. Peggy, and went over all of my questions. I feel like there were answers for some of the big questions that I had, specifically the, the funds or the line items that were like contract services, well, what does that include? In IT, for example, there's one for maintenance services, that's like four hundred thousand dollars. That's kind of a big amount to just have a general title for. So they pulled up the specifics that were in each department's budget, I believe it's called the detail budget, that Ms. Miranda has in her office, or her office maintains that detailed budget. Through the budget, though, I did notice a few things that we, I think we should cut. I think it's really disingenuous for council to be talking about cutting the budget when ours was not cut at all. So in the council budget, on page twenty-four of the budget, I recommend cutting advertising, marketing, and promotion, that is at eighty-five hundred right now. That is for the military coins, the Sibolo coins, lapel pins, things like that. In twenty-twenty-three, it was around twelve hundred dollars, last year we spent eighty-five hundred, this year eighty-five hundred is budgeted. I think that's outrageous to be spending money on that when we're talking about, we're having to decide if we can pay people salaries or hire more staff. I think that it's really crazy that we're budgeting that much for merch. So I recommend either totally removing that line item or decreasing to at most two thousand dollars. Conference travel training, we have five, fifteen thousand budgeted for our conference travel training. Again, I did a whole presentation on this at a council meeting a few months back about what our cost per council member is versus the cost per staff member in each department. I recommend cutting that because this is a very lean year, cutting that to five thousand dollars, that's a ten thousand dollar savings. That gives us each about five hundred and twenty-five dollars to go to a training or a conference. There are plenty of free things in San Antonio, there's plenty of low-cost things that we can go to as well. Uniform and clothing, twenty-eight hundred dollars, I recommend removing that, we can't be buying, again, merch when we're talking about how tight our budget is. And then special events, we have a council line item for special events that is six thousand dollars. I clarified what that was for, I thought it might be for the volunteer appreciation event, and it's not. It is for golf tournaments and things like that that council and people go to. That is budgeted at six thousand, I recommend removing that completely or at minimum decreasing it to a thousand dollars, because again, when you're talking about raising people's salaries versus going to play golf, that's a really, really bad look. City manager's budget, city secretary, municipal court, finance, information services, communication, economic development, and development services, I recommend removing the uniform and clothing from all of those departments as they do not require uniforms for our departments and division, excuse me, divisions that require uniforms. I did keep that line item in there because they are required to wear those uniforms as a part of their job, but if it's just a cardigan or whatever, we can go a year without having new t-shirts and things like that, or polo shirts. In people and performance, this is on page forty-two, the employee awards program was increased, the budget line item was increased to fifteen thousand dollars. Last year we spent eleven thousand dollars on that because this is a lean year, I don't want to cut it completely, but I would like to try to match what we spent last year, so budgeting that at eleven thousand instead of the fifteen thousand. For people and performance training and incentive program, that increased to twenty-nine thousand, but, or I guess it was the same, it was twenty-nine thousand last year, but it wasn't spent, we only spent fifteen thousand last year. I asked during our meeting today if that full twenty-nine thousand was planned on being used. I think that training your employees and keeping your staff up to date on everything is very important, so if that is towards training, I mean, these are the people that do the day-to-day work every single day that we're paying salaries for and putting in pipes in the ground, and so, yeah, it is important that they get trained. So, they, the fifteen, if we could decrease it to that fifteen thousand dollars to match what was actually spent in FY twenty-four, I'd prefer that, or at least bring it down from twenty-nine thousand a little bit. For communication department. For communication department, 5,000 was budgeted for conference or travel. There were several that were listed. I would like to see that decreased, the amount of conference travel because it's budgeted for 5,000 right now. We can decrease that quite a bit, especially for a department of one. That's a really high ratio of training dollars going towards one person. Economic development, there's a line for rental on page 74 for $1,500. And from what I heard today, it's a storage unit. We just purchased a new building. We should have space to store that stuff. So I would like to decrease that significantly, maybe to, from 1,500 to 500, to give them a few months to find that space, to get that building accessible, and then to move items over to that building so we're not paying for a rental unit. So with these recommendations that I've just listed, it's a savings of at least $51,180. And that's just with the higher limit of my proposed amounts, if we're decreasing. It's not going to save the world. It's not going to hire us the five police officers. It's not going to hire us three firemen. It's not going to build a road. But I think that if we're talking about having a very lean budget, we need to cut everything that we possibly can. Otherwise, we're not, we're being hypocrites. If we don't cut our own budget and we don't cut out the, the stuff that isn't a need to have, then we're being hypocrites when we're, when we're talking about everything else. So that is my recommendation.
Thank you, Katie. Go ahead, Joel.
Regarding the 25 budget, what if we were to decrease it from the 28% holdover to the 25%? How much of an increase would we be able to add to our?
You talk about the reserves, Joel?
Yes.
Okay.
Because there's a lot, there's a lot of cities around that don't even have that much in there.
And what, and you said that most cities are doing 25? Is that what you said to me before?
No, 25 or, or lower.
25 or lower, okay.
Yeah, it's a wide variety. Mr. Hicks, you're correct in what you said. Reducing your fund balance is a strategy in which to free up money, and it particularly helps with one-time expenses. You did this in the FY '23 year when Sibolo Valley Drive needed funds, and we reduced from 35% to 28%. Council laser focused on that. But what I'd also ask is that Ms. Miranda speak to the impact of reducing it to 25% and thinking that that then funds ongoing recurring costs. It's really a way of getting one-time money freed up. And so Ms. Miranda, would you add anything to what I just said?
And also, what effect would that have on our, what is it, AA bond rating? Is that right? Is there a requirement to be at a certain percent of reserves in order to maintain that AA requirement?
I'll just say there is not. So there are many cities with that 25% fund reserve that have AA positive outlook or better ratings. So it is a combination, multi-criteria that determines our credit rating.
Thank you.
I'm looking at that is because, I mean, in talking with, with citizens, they, they're paying groceries with credit cards. And we're going to sit here, we've already, Green Valley SUD, they're raising their rates, 8% across the board, 8 for the water and 8 for the wastewater, which we don't have to worry about. The wastewater, well, we do because Iceland's on it. But they're raising their rate. The water is going up 4%. Wastewater is going up 3%. Drainage is going up $1 per, per account. And I understand, we, we've got to take, and we need to pair our, our people, but we also need to realize that we are stewards of the citizens' money. And I appreciate Ms. Cunningham going through and, and looking at tax cuts. I have no problem lowering the, the coins and stuff to the two grand that she had requested over the 8,500. Some of the others, what people don't understand is, you know, I know the police department and the fire department, you're going to ask them to cut their funds where they go golfing? I, I mean, that gets us out there in the public. It's where we're, we're communicating with other, other people, other businesses, other entities. For us to just cut that out, that's fine. I mean, it was like that before. Nobody was going to it before I got on council. And I understand. But look at the relationships that we've acquired in us going to those things. I'm not saying, you know, not to, but there's other besides council. I mean, you know, maybe the, the police and the fire need to cut theirs. It's where they're not going to those fundraisers as well. I don't know. But I, I just know that we've got to, we've got to cut it somewhere for this year. I, I mean, we are on a tight budget, and we've got citizens that are on tight budgets. I mean, talking with citizens, they're like, well, I haven't gotten a pay raise in a couple of years. So what we're looking at is, we're, we're looking at our citizens that pay those taxes and pay these salaries that aren't getting pay increases, but yet we're going to pay increase the, the people here. And, and we need to make sure that they're, they're paid appropriately. I, I get that. I understand that. But we also need to think about, because I'm going to tell you once again, I know you don't like me using this, but I lived in a local city around here that they kept taxing and taxing and taxing. My parents moved out of that city and moved out here to Sibolo because of that, because people start leaving because they can't afford it, and then the riffraff shows up. And then we're going to need police. We're going to need a lot of police, more than, than, than what we've got. And we can't even get what we, we need right now. I mean, we've got four positions that have been open for a very long time. I just, you know, I understand what you're saying. It's a one-time thing. But if we were to lower that, you know, 3% this year, so where we can fund the, you know, give the, the people a raise, and then we can look at it again next year to, to move it back up to 28% if need be. But I don't see us taxing our citizens more money whenever we've already increased water, wastewater, drainage. We've already increased all those on them. I know my taxes on my house went up this year. I'm one of those 100% disabled vets. I don't pay, but my insurance, I still have to pay that. It doubled this year. And I called and I asked, and they're like, hey, it's across the board. So if they double mine, I know that everybody in Sibolo's is raised as well. That, or they just say, okay, I'm not going to pay my insurance. Then they don't have no insurance. And then when the house burns down, then we're going to end up with, with more problems where that house just sits there vacant because they didn't have no insurance to, to recover. So what I'm asking is, if we go down to the 25%, this is my plea, is us going down to 25% so where we can pay our, our staff and, and not raise our taxes for our people.
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much, Councilman Hicks. Just wanted to give everybody a quick overview and landscape of the time that we have left. We have 12 minutes, and we need to get through one, two, three, four counts, four more meeting, or four more items on the agenda, excuse me. And so on the meeting agenda, so.
Can I just note that if council wants to get through all of those items, someone can move to extend the duration of the meeting, and then you guys can vote on.
Sure. On the specific item that we're on at, at that particular time, right? Okay. So, so we need to get through one, two, three of them, and then the fourth one, as long as it's open before eight, we're good. We can continue on. Okay. So I'm going to call for a, a motion on B, approval, disapproval of an ordinance of the City of Sibolo adopting the budget for fiscal year 24-25, beginning October 1st, 24, and ending September 30th, 25.
My concern with that is, we don't know the numbers. If, if we were to use the 3%.
I think that's the way we have to do it, right, Peggy? We have to do the budget first, and then we do the rate? Isn't that the order we have to do it in?
As far as adoption, yes, sir.
Okay.
Well, I don't want to adopt a budget that I'm not, not sure of, because I'd like to see what we've got for 3%.
Okay.
Mayor, I, I know we haven't heard from all members of council of any other ideas. If we're not moving to adopt a budget tonight, I'd like to be able to come back and, working with Ms. Miranda and the staff, make changes that you're directing us to do and show you what that, those revised expenditures and revenues look like.
Okay. So is your recommendation, and your recommendation to leave this item open until the 21st? And then we can take a vote then?
I, I would like, I would like to say that changing our fund balance requirement, we would not be proposing recurring expenditures with those funds. So we would only be able to, for example, if we increased public safety salaries with those funds, we may not have the funding in the following year to do that if we use the 3% this year. So it's, we shouldn't be funding recurring expenses with one-time money.
Yeah. So we can't, like, we can say, we hope we get more sales tax. And the sales tax revenue, what we budgeted last year versus what we're budgeting for FY '25 is only a difference of 51,000. So we can't bank on that. Yes, we're getting more commercial. Yes, it's coming. Yes, we're getting sales tax. But it's not a magic wand to solve all of our issues. We have a tight budget. We have a lot of growth. We have a lot of stuff that we have to pay for. We, I'm really concerned in using another one-time fund thing to pay for salaries. We already have ARPA expiring. We're going to have to figure out where that money's coming from next year. And then adding this on top of that for salaries, too, is alarming. So I am not for that. I think that talking about the 3% maybe for a one-time thing, like a project, that's definitely something we could talk about. But for right now, with everything that I reviewed in the budget today and all weekend, I don't see where we, where that 3% would be useful for us right now, because most of our issues are with recurring expenses that are annual expenses that we have to keep up with. So that's, that's mine.
Okay. So we can leave this item open, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So do you want to put a motion to table? That way we can have the full council with, including Randy and Norma?
Sure.
I need a motion to table.
Okay.
Second.
So we have a move to table by Councilman Mahoney, seconded by Councilwoman Cunningham.
And Mayor and Council, that's move to September 21st.
Correct.
Move to table, August 21st.
August 21st.
I am so sorry. Thank you.
This Wednesday. Okay.
On August 21st, only, only a tax rate of 47.69 could be considered, nothing higher.
That is correct. Thank you for.
Agenda item.
No, you have to pass a budget before you.
Okay. Well, so, but we can do the same thing with that one if we open the, open the agenda item, and then we can talk about it on Wednesday, right?
No, you have to pass, because you have to call the election tonight.
Okay.
The election has to be called tonight.
You have to pass the budget. You have to pass the budget. You have to ratify the budget, pass the tax rate, but then call your election right now.
Okay, so for eight, eight, for item eight.
Need to remove yours.
I will withdraw.
How do we, oh, can I second withdraw?
We could do the continuance, right?
Yes, I'm not, but you can't then, at the next meeting, pass your tax rate above the voter approval tax rate.
Okay. All right. So we need to, we need to pass the budget tonight, is what you're saying, right?
If you want to go above voter approval tax rate, then you have to have your budget in the meantime.
Okay. And this one needs five out of seven votes. So we're just, we're going to have to take a vote on this, whether we like it or not.
I'm, I make a motion to approve the budget with the changes that I listed.
Do we already have the motion that I made with the table?
Can you rescind it?
I withdrew the motion.
I withdraw my second.
Sorry, you, you did say that. Now, in this budget book, we provided you different tax rates. And so if we go to, let me go to the page, when you're saying you want to move to approve the budget, I would ask that you go to pages, Roman numeral four, roman numeral five, and you have on page, roman numeral five, different tax rates, including the 53.07, the 47.69, and the 49.90. And I believe a motion I'm looking at, our attorney, could be that you move to adopt the FY '25 budget based upon the figure shown on roman numeral five under the proposed budget at a, whatever tax rate you're looking at.
And that's 10A, where we, where we decide the rate, right?
No, I, I'm saying in your move for a budget, because you asked us for different scenarios. This isn't a budget based on one number. You have different expenditures. So I would say that you would move to approve the FY '25 budget. Then, if you look at page, roman numeral five, you have total expenditures and total revenues. And in your motion, you could say, I move to approve the FY '25 budget. I'm reading off the 49.90 tax rate, with total revenues of $22,923,679, and total expenditures of $23,224,823. That is a way in which you could move to approve this budget to get a vote on the dais.
Also, in agenda link, under financial impact for this item, I provided the figures for the total budget. So at a tax rate of 53.07, the total budget is $72.7 million, 72,698,469. A budget based on a tax rate of 47.69 is, sets appropriations for $71,218,469. And it's in the financial, I don't know if you have access to agenda link while you're on the dais. But under the financial impact section of the memo, is there three options or four options really, that you can use for your motion?
I mean, I'm, I'm just going to put this out there. I really hate that we put these end times on these meetings because it shoves us into a corner where we're not able to discuss things as fully as we need to. And now we're being told to be, to make an option in the next five minutes on two major things for the city. So I just want to air my grievance with that because this has been an ongoing thing with council and with these meetings. And I don't know who sets that time, but it needs to stop. I, I don't know where the motion thing is. There's a specific wording.
So I can hand it to you if you'd like.
So with the, the option A and option B for the 49, whatever it is, we discussed this at the last meeting. Option A is 100% market pay, which I'm 100% for, but it adds a police officer. We already have vacancies in the police that we can't fill, so it does not make sense to me to add another police officer. I would like to swap that out with one or two firefighters if we can, but I don't know what that's going to do to the tax rate.
Can we work with that, Mr. Reed?
One second, sir.
I think, I think Katie's ready to make that motion.
So, I move to approve FY '25 budget, the total revenues of this.
As long as we start this item.
So Ms. Cunningham, if, if you wanted to remove the additional police officer?
Yeah, scenario A adds an additional police officer with all the vacancies that we have right now. I don't know that it's realistic to add another police officer when we have so many vacancies. But if we could add another firefighter with that. But if not, for the sake of time, then I would just go with that so that we can get this on the ballot for voters.
Yep.
And yes, the scenario that Ms. Honored Miranda put in here is just a scenario. You have the ability to, to modify that.
Right, right. So we're swapping the police officer for a firefighter, and everything else was fine. Everybody had 100%.
But the rate is still, is less, firefighter was less than a police officer.
Okay, well, they'll figure it out.
Okay.
Make the motion.
I don't know where the wording is.
So one, one second. Are you looking at the column with the 49.90 tax rate?
Yes.
Okay.
Since we can't actually vote for the one that I wanted.
Well, it would provide the same amount of funding for a firefighter.
Okay.
Okay, so we're good. So you have the language, Mr. Reed?
Is it on here?
Okay, so scenario A. And then we don't need to necessarily read the general fund, just that, right?
We'll figure it out. I mean, it's one position. It's not going to be a big deal.
Okay. I move to approve the FY '25 budget with total revenues and expenditures of
Total expenditures.
Total expenditures of $71,818,630. And that's it.
So we have a motion on the, on the floor. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilman Mahoney. Please vote on your screens.
And this allows for the public to vote on this. That's all we're voting for.
You need, and you need five votes to pass.
Okay, so, so this one did not pass, and we, it takes five out of seven council members to pass a budget. And so.
For the tax rate.
For the tax, the tax rate, sorry. And so we're going to have to do this on Wednesday. That's why we need to come back on Wednesday.
Now on Wednesday, we can't pass.
Yeah, we can.
No, we can't do the 4.99 on Wednesday. That's what they've been telling us. Tonight is the only night that we can do that. On Wednesday, the highest we can go is a voter approval tax rate of 4 point, or 0.4769. So you guys just voted down any kind of raises for any of the staff in public safety.
Is that true? Are, are we able to vote on this with all full council on Wednesday?
No.
So Mayor and Council, at your July 30th budget workshop, when you gave us this direction, we came back on August 8th. So Mayor and Council, at your July 30th budget workshop, when you gave us this direction, we came back on August 8th.
If somebody wants to vote, we can take your time to keep discussing it.
Okay, so let's.
I make a motion to continue time. For 30 minutes.
Okay, we have a second? Okay, we have a second. All in favor? Any opposed? Okay, so that gives us, let's see the vote. Alright, so we've got four to one. Alright, so that gives us 30 more minutes.
So from my understanding, we still can't vote on a tax rate because we still haven't approved a budget.
That is correct.
You have to approve the budget first.
Right.
Itself needs a majority, but you have to, but your budget also includes that you're not setting into a tax rate. So in the end, you're gonna have to have the super majority, 60%, all five of you in order to approve the tax rate.
Okay, so we're missing two council members, and that's why we don't.
So my frustration is, is that we, we say that we, our mission talks about being responsive to citizens, talking with citizens, communication, blah, blah, blah. We're voting to take this to the citizens. If we don't take this to the citizens, then we're making the decision on it, whether they like it or not, period.
Okay, Ms. Cunningham, real quick, I mean, you just did 10 pages, what is this, 10 pages of things that were cut. You know, I, I really applaud this. Yeah, sorry, I really applaud this because this looks almost exactly what I did last year. And in almost every one of these cuts last year, it was gone by the board, nobody cared, wasn't a big deal, right? And I'm not saying that for any other reason except to say, these still, these cuts are still here, right? There's still things here that need to be taken out. They need to be taken out last year, they need to be taken out this year, right? I appreciate what you did. I, I did that last year, and it was fruitless. And I think that we have given plenty of direction. One of the directions we gave months ago was that we needed to have lots of budget meetings to have this. I'm very interested to know today that you found out that there's a master budget, right? That would have been a really, right, a detailed budget, sorry. I, I would have, I would have liked to seen some of that, right? Because, because what we got, what we get, what we continue to get is, as we're facing an inflationary period where people are struggling to pay their bills, we keep getting, well, we need to do this, we need, we need to spend more, we need to, we need to tax people and spend more in the city. Well, the people that pay those taxes are getting it from every direction, right? And so you sit down and pull up 10 pages over the weekend of things that, honest to goodness, you and I probably 100% agree on everything that's on this list, right? We talked about it last year. We've talked about it in multiple meetings to date, and none of it has been cut. And that's where I'm frustrated, because the people out there that are paying these taxes expect us to behave responsibly. The idea that somehow I'm not for police officers, remember on April 9th, I came here and said, we need to recoup those police officers. And up until you and I showed up at the district office to have a negotiation, we were still gonna pick up 17%. What would that have done to this budget? So, the idea that we're against public safety, that we're not for the police and the fire, we're not the ones that held on to a number that was fictitious. And so, I've yet to see any real effort to cut this budget. I appreciate your efforts. I mean, I've seen it from you, but I haven't seen it from staff. And so it makes it really hard to go back to the taxpayers who are paying the freight and say, you're not getting a pay raise this year. Everything that you own is going, everything that you owe is going up. But we're just gonna go ahead and increase your taxes. Now, you say, it's their choice, sure. I've said all along, if we're gonna have real discussions about public safety and raising taxes, then that should be funded 100% out of M&amp;O, just right off the, just pay it. But here's the problem, we don't. We, we couch it under the idea that we'll coerce the taxpayer into saying, you'll be less safe with fire and police if you don't raise your own taxes. Well, who wants that deal, right? What we should be saying to the taxpayer is, hey, we're gonna fund police and fire and, and public water and wastewater because those are basic fundamental things that the city's supposed to do. This other stuff, we're gonna take a really, really hard look at and whack away at. Because in a lean year, that's what needs to go, not police and fire. So you hold people who are already essentially hostage to no increases in paying their jobs, inflation that they can't control, and now you're forcing them into tax increases just so they feel like they're getting a police officer, of which, we learned at the last meeting, we probably aren't gonna be able to hire one in the next fiscal year anyway. So, that's where I'm stuck. Because it's a really hard sell for me to say, yeah, let's increase taxes, hold this money over here, and then not even be able to produce anything on the street for these people. That's kind of a bummer deal. So, I do applaud you. I appreciate you doing this. This, this feels like something I once did. And, so I appreciate it. I mean, it's, it's, there's a lot in there when you go line by line, and it gets frustrating pretty quick. And that's where I'm at. It's just a really hard sell to go to the taxpayer and say, I'm gonna hold you over the barrel for police and fire.
So I just want to clarify, so those 10 pages were things that I had questions on. Not all of those needed to be cut. There was $51,000 in cuts that I think we should, and I still think, regardless of what we do, I think we should cut those because I think in a lean year, you shouldn't be buying merch. The voter approval tax rate is still an increase in taxes. Keeping our tax rate exactly the same is still an increase in taxes. The property values go up, we still have to pay taxes. This is, in, in any scenario, unless we decrease taxes, which we cannot afford, people are gonna be paying more. This gives them a chance to vote. Hey, it's gonna go up anyway. Do I want it to go up just a little bit more so that we can have XYZ? We're, it goes from us making a decision to allowing the citizens to make a decision. Their vote no against that drops it down to the voter approval tax rate of 4.7.
Right, I just confirmed that with our attorney. And so what we're doing is we're, we're putting a rate on the ballot along with several other things, like the animal shelter, like the, you know, the police-fire substation. And we're allowing our citizens to make the choice as, as to what their tax rate is. And so this is a vote to allow the democratic process to play out. And so if they vote no, let's say we get 49% or anything less than 50%, then therefore it will default to the voter, voter approval tax rate. So therefore, we're gonna get one of the two, you know what I mean? And so we're not raising taxes by, by putting this on the ballot. We're allowing the citizens to make that choice, whether or not they want to pay our, our firefighters, our police officers, market rate, which is what they could make if they went to New Braunfels, Shirts, Seguin, anywhere else, you know? And so, it's just allowing the citizens to choose, that's it. Does that make sense to everybody? Okay.
Mayor and Council.
And so this is our last opportunity to put this on the ballot for the citizens to choose. We're, we're not voting the tax rate.
Nobody's jumping up and down about raising taxes. Nobody. Nobody wants to. I don't want to raise taxes. I don't want to pay more. I have a kid in college that I'm paying for. Got three others at home that I gotta save for. Yeah, so, it, it's expensive. We all are paying extra. Everything is increased. I don't think anyone is arguing that. Passing a budget at the 499 allows citizens a chance to have a say in whether they are okay with paying 499 or if they're okay with paying 469. It's giving them those two options. If we move forward with 4769, we are making that decision for them, and there's possible services that they won't be getting, that they didn't even have a chance to vote on. That is all that I'm, I'm saying here. I think we should give the citizens a chance to vote on it. Whether it passes or not, we have to deal with the rate after that. If it goes with 4769, great, that's what citizens want, we'll figure it out. We're gonna have to cut projects, we're gonna have to cut contracts, we're gonna have to cut a lot of different things. My $51,000 isn't gonna cover the difference there. If we go the four, if they vote for the 499, then we have a little bit of extra wiggle room. We hopefully retain some more of our public safety staff, and then we're able to be in a better position in planning for next year, which we absolutely have to plan for next year. We cannot keep going with the number of police officers we have. Mr. Benson made a very good argument all year about adding more officers. Chief made arguments about having more officers. We have to have a plan moving forward for hiring them, which is why I'm kind of opposed to putting that out, to hiring, or adding another police position. Haven't been able to hire the ones that we have vacant, why add another? But again, that can go to the voters. That is all I'm saying, is we should have this go to the voters so they can choose between 499 and 47.
So in case there's any confusion, my counsel, if it, if it fails at the election, you don't lose your ability to then set it to the voter approval tax rate. Then you'll go back and pick, pick the tax rate that you're gonna set that doesn't exceed the voter approval tax rate.
Does that make perfect sense to you? I mean, so it, we, we give it to the people, Joel. Like, so we, we allow them to make the choice. And if they don't want to pay the 4999, then it defaults back to the 47. Right.
100%.
So that's what we're looking to do, is give the people the opportunity to vote to pay for public safety. Because we are at a point right now, we're at a crisis point, Joel, as far as we're losing officers, we're losing firefighters to other municipalities around here that have the revenue to be able to pay these officers a living wage. If we don't put this on the ballot and it doesn't pass, well, there will be an exodus as far as public safety in Cibolo.
Mayor and Council, can I add just something?
Please.
So, I appreciate the partnership between the council and the staff across the multiple months that we've been working on this. So I, I need to, for the record, remind you that we did provide you the general fund light item detail back in June and said, here's the base budget. We said, hey, this is a work in progress because we did not even have a 28% fund reserve at that time. But we gave you that information so that you could start looking at those details. We had a question from Mr. Benson to provide the details around all consulting services, travel training conferences, and other supplies and meeting expenses. We shared that with you some time ago. On July 16th, after that meeting, staff went to work because our message was we are still striving to meet the 28% fund reserve. Staff went back and we cut $328,000 in that base budget. So that on July 30th, when we met with you, we did meet the 28% fund reserve. And in addition to just those base cuts, we negotiated through Chief Andres on the Dispatch ILA to minimize the cost increase because we questioned Shirts on its numbers. Ms. Sanchez negotiated on the medical rate so that we did not have an increase year over year, but flat year over year. And we created that Development Services Fund to save $280,000 in the general fund. I appreciate the partnership with council for me to provide, and the staff to provide you information, to allow you to ask questions throughout this budget process. I appreciate how staff has implemented savings in this budget. It is a bare bones budget. And Ms. Cunningham, today you've offered another $51,000 if all of those were implemented. So I just wanted, for the record, to recognize the efforts between council and the staff to arrive at where we are today.
I don't see my paper anymore. I don't know where it was written down.
So there are some concerns by council members as far as items that are in the budget. And so, what we'd like to do is get, or have a workshop with council after post-passing the budget.
Yes.
Meaning that if we, if there's anything we need to take a look at and reconsider, tweak a little bit here and there, we, we want council, we want staff to be willing to do so, right? And so, I, I feel that those concerns that certain council members have with the budget in the state it's in right now could be addressed through that workshop. But by time, we have to approve it by this date, by state law, right?
That is correct.
And so that's why we need to move forward, and that we, we have a, we have a council workshop on the budget to, to take a look at certain items that we feel that need to be changed. Because we have the ability to control the budget as far as, you know, any budget amendments that come along. We, we get here with those all year long. And so we, we do have the ability to, to make minor changes after the fact.
Yeah, and Mayor and Council, this budget is effective October 1st, so you have the month of September for us to come back and do a budget workshop.
Okay, so we have time before October 1st, Joel, and, to cancel. Because we, we have to pass this tonight. I mean, there's, this is what we have. We have five people here, and it has to happen. Do you have more language for you?
Do I need to do the full expense, or can I just say the tax rate?
For the budget, you do the expenditure.
I do the expenditure. I move, I move to approve the FY '25 budget with the total expenditure of $71,818,630 and include a quarterly workshop to discuss things in the budget.
Could you say that amount again?
71,818,630.
It was the amount, yes, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, I got a motion made by Councilwoman Cunningham, second, by Councilman Mahoney. So we have one holdout, Joel Hicks. So Joel, what have we gotta do? I mean, what, what amendment do you want to make to this budget right now in order to make this something that will pass? If you can name one thing that'll get you, because we have to get five. So if you can amend the, the motion with your ask, we can do that.
If, if we can have a true sit-down, a true discussion.
You can make the motion, but, but your, but your version there that you want, as far as a true sit-down.
I want a true sit-down because there's, you know, she wants to cut our expenditures, but there's, there's other spots, there's salaries that need to be cut. I mean, I don't know if Mr. Benson's brought it up, that we need, I, I mean, granted, we had a, a great little thing on economic development. I'm not here to put down. I know that people wrote in. Look, we, we know what's going on. At least I know what's going on. We've got to have a sit-down with this, and we've got to split stuff up because we've got to have, our planning has got to be spot-on. And I think we're falling short there. Our economic development, I think we're falling short there. These are things, and there's others, but I want to make sure that.
And you want to have.
We are having a true sit-down.
So these will be on the agenda for the, the budget workshop to be addressed, Joel?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to include that in, in the motion that I handed you?
I'll move to, to approve the FY '25 budget with the total expenditures 7, 71,818,630 with the total, uh, total revenues with a.
Total expenditures.
Total expenditures, total revenues, total expenditures. With a true sit-down with the staff and, and this council to truly work out a budget.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilman Hicks and a second by Councilwoman Cunningham. All right, we are in approval on there, five to zero. We're gonna move on to 9A, approval, disapproval of a resolution of the City of Cibolo to ratify the property tax increase reflected in the fiscal year 2425 budget. Mr. Reed, Ms. Miranda.
Mayor and Council, Ms. Miranda's grabbing the resolution. So, passing this resolution to reflect the tax rate to, to support the budget.
And this, this is for the 499, right?
That is, that is, the expenditures you just included in your motion to approve a budget requires a tax rate of 49.90.
Okay, and so, just so the rest of council knows, this is not, this is not us voting to, to set the tax rate at that amount. This is us putting it on the ballot. And so if, if it fails, it defaults back to, was it 47?
After that, when the council will get to choose its tax rate, you will not be able to vote.
Okay, so we, so we can go under the voter approval if it, if it doesn't garner more than 51%, right, or 51 vote? Okay, and so this allows the public to choose.
Well, this, this particular item, this resolution, is to ratify the tax revenue increase in the. Well, this, this particular item, this resolution is to ratify the tax revenue increase in the budget. And so there are blanks in the document that, that will fill in, I don't know that they need to fill it in, in the motion. But it will, they just need to move to approve the resolution and we'll fill in the blanks with the 4990 language.
Do you have the wording for this that Katie can use?
Turn it over, just the title. So the title of the resolution, you could say, I move to approves, approve a resolution by the City Council of the City of Cibolo, Texas to ratify the increase in property tax revenues from the previous year. That is the title of the resolution.
Okay. I I move to approve a resolution by the City Council of the City of Cibolo to ratify the increase in property tax revenues from the previous year.
Okay, I got a motion made by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilman Hicks. Okay, motion passes, five zero, thank you. All right. Next one is 10A, approval disapproval of an ordinance of the City of Cibolo setting to add velorem tax rate for tax year 2024, Mr. Reed, Ms. Miranda. And this is the one that I was referring to earlier as far as giving the citizens the option to vote for a tax rate that will allow our city employees to get 100% to market. And I believe to hire one, we made it firefighter instead of police officer because we do have, if I'm correct, nine openings on the police department, including the SROs. So this would, instead of making it nine openings, to make it 10 openings where we decided to hire firefighter. Correct, yeah, and this is just for the citizens to vote on. If the citizens voted down, then we go to a different tax rate, which is lower than the voter approval tax rate, thank you.
And this item requires a roll call vote. And again, it requires at least 60% in favor of the tax rate, but it follows your consideration of the budget and ratification of the tax rate.
I'll make a motion. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of .4990, which is effectively 8.8% increase in the tax rate.
Got a motion by Councilwoman Cunningham, second by Councilman Mahoney. Okay, roll call. Start with Councilman Hicks. Eyes have it, five zero, thank you. Okay, last one. 10B, approval disapproval of an order calling a tax ratification election to be held by the City of Cibolo, Texas on November 5th, 2024. And this is to put the tax rate on the budget, or on the ballot, sorry.
I make a motion to approve 10B as written.
Got a motion by Councilman Hicks and a second by Councilman, Councilman Hetzel. Roll call on this one too?
Can we just hold up one second, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Is this to put it on the election?
Okay, so just write on your screens then, please.
Just, just a wait.
Okay.
So, Mayor and Counsel, this will require through separate motions, you're going to take, make a motion to establish a tax rate for purposes of maintenance and operation. You will make a motion to establish a tax rate for principal and interest of the city. And then you'll proceed with your standard procedure to adopt a combined tax rate. So I'm going to hand you my screen so that somebody can make those first two motions.
Hold on, our attorney has a comment.
No, I'm just clarifying that they, they did the combined ones, we just need to do the other two.
All right.
And then we can do the combined.
Right here, sir. And then after a vote on this one, you do a motion for them.
Because this one right now, did that pass?
Everything passed, or yeah?
Oh, did you ask, you have, you have a motion, you can do, you have a motion sitting, so can you withdraw your motion?
I withdraw my motion.
Which one was that again?
Mine was to just take care of everything.
Okay, so, yeah, withdraw?
I do.
Okay, so Councilman Hicks withdrew and you withdraw your second, right, Council, Councilman Hetzel? Okay. Withdrawn.
It's on your tax ratification, you're now going to make motions to adopt a tax rate. You're going to make a motion for your own now, which is on here, and then you're going to make a motion.
This is for MNO, right?
One second, sir. Anna, for the 49.90, what is the MNO tax rate?
We, we took it off, we, Councilman Hicks withdrew it and then Hetzel withdrew his second. Are we okay Peggy?
This is for the principal.
Yep. Because the other one was staying at 17, right? The PNI?
All right, I'll make a motion to move to establish a tax rate of 3197 for the purposes of maintenance and operation.
Okay. What about the other one? Are we going to do them both, they have to be separate? Okay, all right, got it. All right, so we have a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilman Mahoney, please vote on your screens. Five to zero, and then go with the interest one?
Make a motion to move for established tax rate of 1793 for payment of principal and interest on the debt of the city.
Got a council, a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilman Mahoney, please vote on your screens.
And the last motion is to call, order calling a tax ratification election to be held by the City of Cibolo, Texas, November 5th, 2024.
Okay, I got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilman Mahoney, please vote on your screens, this is for the election. All right, we have conducted our city business tonight.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, you mean the, the workshop? You want to establish a date for the workshop? We have till October 1st to make changes to the budget.
We need to have
Okay. You want to do it in September?
So we can discuss that right now, August 27th, next week is your next regular council meeting, so.
We could do it in an off week?
We always strive to do these in an off week, so that first week in September is the week of Labor Day, so we're closed on Monday. We're open September 3rd through Friday, September 6th. If, and Ms. Semics does not have her meeting book, but if you wanted to do something that week of Labor Day, you could look at Tuesday, the 3rd, Wednesday, the 4th, Thursday, the 5th.
Personally, I'd rather go the following week because I think a lot of us have Labor Day. Well, you need to do it that week?
Yeah.
Okay, that's fine, all right, so let's look for that, the 4th?
Thursday would be better for me.
Thursday works for you, the 5th? All right, so we'll set the 5th at 6:30 PM? Is everybody okay with that?
Whatever you'd want to.
September 5th at 6:30 PM.
That's Thursday.
If there's another meeting going on at the same time, we can meet over there, right?
We can go to the annex, yeah.
The other building.
Yeah, we'll, we'll find a spot. Okay. So let's, let's set that on the calendar.
Move them over there.
And you're not officially taking action on this, we understand your direction and we will execute on it.
And can we also, before that meeting, get that detailed budget if possible?
Say that again?
The detailed budget, can you resend that? I know you mentioned you had sent it before.
Yeah.
The line item detail?
Yeah, and you have it in your, your budget book.
The budget book is detailed by line item? Are you looking for something that?
Specific.
More detailed than that?
Kind of what we were talking about today where you said that, when I said, well, what are these contractual services and you said it was this, this and this?
For, for certain accounts, like contract services, professional services, travel. I think mainly those three, and any capital related items.
Yeah, I'm not cutting that stuff out, I mean, you have to have it.
The departments that are entering the budget to enter multiple lines.
You can cut some salaries.
So that we have the detail. So, we have that, that format is not easy to look at. I mean, I can download it, export it and send it, but I, I feel like it, there might need to be a little, not a training session, but just a, you know, this is what you're looking at.
Okay.
And that's what you provided previously for consulting services, travel training conferences and other supplies and meeting expenses. We provided that previously. We have not received a comment on those details.
I just think if we can do homework beforehand, that would make it go a little smoother.
We will.
Like Katie said, if, if all council members could submit their, you know, their concerns in writing, you know, to staff and then we could form the budget based around that.
I request that you send that to me and copy Anna, Miranda and Ms. Semics, and we will consolidate that into a single report.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Reed. Motion, you can I get a motion to adjourn, we already have one, right? Okay, we got a motion by Councilman Hicks, second by Councilman Mahoney, all in favor? Any pose? Here, no, we are adjourned, thank you.